Some persons thought you weren't going to be attending.
A quick announcement, everybody that signed our guest list before you come in, we've already done it, thank you. Let's go, take the conference, maybe?
Back in.
Yes. You bring some, we're gonna make that sound, right?
Like the sunblock? Oh my god. Like, just the evening, this is part of the, the gimp's a worm.
No. Yes, no.
Rangers, so?
No.
Okay.
You're not allowed.
How did you do?
What was your? Where's the thing for me?
Welcome to the show.
Mike, I've started to record.
Oh my goodness.
We started.
At seven oh one, I'll call us to order.
Also have minutes on agenda, so if anybody needs copies.
Yeah, drink water, man. I'm sure. So we got two items on our agenda tonight. One of them is the public hearing. Laramie Farms needs to cross some wetlands. And the other is the approval of our minutes from the October eighth meeting. We'll take care of that. We'll do the Laramie Farms hearing first. Um, before we get started. Was? I think I was expecting a whole lot more people. Um, I see that.
Usual suspects?
Yeah, not a whole lot of people. Um, so if you want to speak in favor or opposition to a point, that's fine. I'm gonna ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. I've got a, I'll use a timer on my phone to keep track of that. We are going to be talking about the wetlands crossing. And if you could stick to that topic, that'd be great. The, the applicant has asked for a special exception be approved. Does everybody know the difference between a variance and a special exception?
Think it's always helpful to spell it out?
The big difference is that a variance is something that we consider when the action the applicant wants to take is prohibited by the zoning ordinance. It's flat out not allowed. So we have to consider whether or not we should allow them to do it. That's a variance. A special exception is something that is allowed by the zoning ordinance under certain conditions, under special conditions. In that case, the applicant asks us to approve that action that they want to take. And we have to go through a checklist to make sure that they have, you know, that they're operating out of the right condition. This is different from the variance criteria. Hmm, that's about it. Or do you have any questions about the difference, about what we're doing tonight? Okay, so in, in this case, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Taylor to read the public hearing notice for this case, so you've got all the details in the record.
Okay.
Lot of symbols in it, so.
Yes.
Hang tight.
This is Enfield Land Use Case C twenty-four dash ten dash zero-two. D.C. Development and Construction LLC, Stephen Dougherty. Apply for special exception for wetlands crossings as required by Enfield zoning ordinance, Article four, subsection four oh six dot one, paragraph D for a road crossing. Subject parcels are located at one oh seven Maple Street, map fourteen lots forty-seven and forty-eight, and are owned by Maple Street Enfield Acquisition LLC, care of John D. Bateta.
I'm hearing some late arrivals. I see we've been joined. Uh, and I'm hearing some coming in on the phone, so I'm gonna ask the applicants if they'd like to make a presentation. I'm not gonna ask, I'm not gonna allow anybody from the audience or the board to speak or ask any questions during the presentation. Make a note of your questions and we can ask them afterwards. After the presentation, I'll remind everybody of the difference between a special exception and a variance and the, the purpose of the meeting tonight. Um, in particular, the purpose of the meeting for you to have context while you are thinking about what questions you might want to ask. The purpose of the meeting is to get the board, the people seated, seated up here, these people, to get them the information they need in order to render a decision. It is, it is not a public information session. We are not here to allow the public, we are not here for the purpose of informing the public about the developer's plans. That's, that's a completely different session. Uh, so there will be some overlap, of course, because we'll need some of that information, you know, for our deliberations, but please try to bear that in mind as you think about what you want to ask. Okay. Um, would the applicant like to make a presentation? While they're getting up here, um, let me quickly read off the uh, the conditions under which they're allowed, under the, under the, the conditions under which we have to grant the special exception. And that reminds me, there's an interesting difference in language in the RSA, in the, in the legal statutes. When we're asked to grant a variance, we may grant the variance if the conditions are met, if the criteria are met. But that means it's, it, and so if, if it's a special condition or a special exception that we're being asked to consider, we shall grant it if the conditions are met. So if, if we feel they've met the conditions, we have to give them the special exception permission. This probably, the difference in language probably reflects the fact that special exceptions are allowed in the ordinance as long as you meet the, the conditions, variances are not. So again, it's a may, shall difference. So the proposed site is found to be an appropriate location for the use. That's one thing you've got to consider. The proposed air, use will not impact the property values or improvements in the adjacent area. You've got to think about that. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. The proposed use will comply with the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. That's it. We have five board members with us tonight, so I'll not be sitting in alternate. Bob, you're welcome to participate in the discussion. Uh, Ms. Ophiero has elected to sit in the audience tonight and participate as a private citizen and not as an alternate board member. You've read, I've talked. Your turn. Introduce yourselves, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Cronin, I'm an attorney from Manchester with Cronin, Bissin and Zalinski. Uh, seated with me is Mr. Dougherty, one of my principals. So D. Bateta was also with us this evening, uh, as well as Mr. Dubay and Mr. Luke Hurley, both of experts in the land use arena and engineer and wetland scientists that were active in the application. Just for a brief review, this particular site was before you, uh, months ago in connection with the use variance, uh, for basically height and more than one lot and the building, a number of hearings on that, and ultimately that was granted. They did some further evaluation after that, that they determined that there was some wetland issues which are not unusual or rare when you're looking at a seventy-seven plus acre parcel of this size. Uh, your ordinance provides, as the chairman noted, uh, a special exception categories and one is for wetland areas that may be, uh, used by special exception for roads, driveways, utilities, power lines and pipelines, water impoundments, accessory building or structures customarily incidental to permitted uses allowed by C. Above. And then there's a catch on that, provided any such buildings are not used for occupancy purposes and provided no onsite waste disposal facilities are required. Uh, we believe, as you note in the application, which we provided in narrative and a number of materials and plans, that we meet the criteria for the special exception. I'll go into them at some detail. Procedurally, the law requires when a special exception for the water impacts is submitted, uh, that there's a reference made to some other town boards, conservation commission for one, uh, the health officer for another, and the planning board. Uh, that was done, Mr. Dougherty and, and company went and appeared at those various meetings. The sidewalk is reflected in the meetings. Uh, there's some very good comments and constructive discussion and believe we've satisfied their concerns for the most part. I will note the planning board exercised its discretion and said, we've looked at it, but we're gonna reserve comment in the event you come back before us with a full set of plans, which this would have to go through the typical planning process, uh, where they scrutinize, you know, everything from A to, A to Z as they should. Uh, this is also a large parcel and the, the state would be involved in the wetland issues with its AOT program, which is a rigorous program that evaluates these types of uses, uh, roads and that sort of thing and uh, does their analysis and a permit would be required from the state and the planning board to process.
Counselor, can I stop you for a moment and point out that, um, in the packet for the, for the board members, there is a letter from the Enfield Conservation Commission. And if you haven't read that, I would encourage you to take a moment to read it.
Thanks, I read it online, I read it before, but now I'd like to have it here for mine.
Uh, there are two other pieces in the, in the packet. One is a, um, a letter from Mark McKeon appraisal, offering an opinion, a professional opinion on whether the property values will be affected. Um, and then there's a letter from Benny Tursey, our building inspector. Yeah, I'm not entirely sure what he's asking, so if he's here or maybe we'll ask Rob to clarify.
He's also our health inspector.
That's our health inspector. So we have, we have those and, um, are you all familiar with the, with the requirement in the ordinance that the health inspector and the conservation commission be notified twenty days before the hearings? That's to allow them to give input, which they have done on paper here. That's why Mr. Cronin was talking about that. Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, just to, to go forward and, and probably keep it in context with your comments, the building inspector, health officer raised an issue with respect to the emergency access that goes down in Maple. You may remember there was some controversy over that years ago when this was approved as a residential subdivision. Uh, they were houses that are much closer to the existing homes over on Maple and that emergency access was gonna be the primary access for that development. And I knew that created a lot of concerns. Uh, in our presentation, I just want to restate it here that that access, uh, that will go through Maple down that way is an emergency access. Uh, the building inspector asked that it be gravel, uh, so there's no porous pavement there. It's perfectly acceptable to us and if that's a condition that the ZBA wants to put on approving that, that's certainly fine with us, it makes a lot of sense where the expectation would be that it wouldn't be traveled frequently. It certainly would discourage people, maybe, uh, who may wanted to take a drive up there, will be gated, I believe, so, uh, uh, that's a, a good thing in our view and we have no, uh, issue with it. When this first started out, the request for the, uh, for the special exception involved a much larger area. It was around eighty-something square feet. They did some further engineering and brought that down substantially. Uh, in the process, they also, uh, did some design work to plant and put some buffers around the edges of these water areas for further protection and make them function better. All of these, uh, wetlands, you know, that we're not asking to fill in a lake or a pond or something that's a, a major water body in the arena of wetland science, they use different values and functions and these are what they refer to in Mr. Hurley's report as low functioning or low quality wetlands. Uh, that's not to insult them in any way, but, uh, just, I think, a term of art that, uh, they're probably created, I think there's some uh, opinion in the paper that probably created from some tree removal where you're removing stumps and things and creating depressions and over time they become natural collectors of water. Uh, so that's the request, even though I, I think there's another comment about this ten different locations, which uh, we view that as preferable to having one large body and filling that in, filling in small pieces along the way in that area that, uh, has some wetland pockets as defined by the jurisdictional issues. Well, we did ask Mark McKeon, just in the exercise of caution, he did a comprehensive report in the ZBA exercise on valuation. Uh, we'd sent him the plans and said that we have to go back before the ZBA again for a special exception, would you take a look at those properties down in Maple? Some of the residential properties and see if what we're proposing to do here in the plans would result in any diminution of value? And his report is, speaks for itself and he concluded that it would not. Uh, as we mentioned in the prior, uh, case, the, the density here and the type of use that's being developed, the garden-style apartments in the townhouses, uh, both allowed in terms of density, uh, and use, the character of them and the variances that we saw and received were for height and more than one, we're building on a lot. These fills will be to assist in creating that road that comes off Route four, which was the ideal way to get through the site. Uh, there was, again, some concerns here that it was gonna come up from Maple and that was gonna be the primary access. Said, no, 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 we'll bring it off four, that's the right way to do it, but to traverse the property and get through it. As you can see on the plans, Mr. Dubay has identified the, each of the areas with the reference to the amount of square footage in, in each piece. And there'll be utilities and things that will run through those areas as well, which is typical with the road construction. You put your utility and, uh, all your work that goes into that. So that's the relief, uh, that we're seeking to receive here this evening. Uh, going through the report, you have, uh, a number of different plans. Included is a sheet, uh, that has a, a pink layout. And that's the prior. Yeah, you can put it out, just so they know what they're looking at. Some people, when they get through it, they might say, what, what's this plan all about?
Dr. Puffisman, counsel?
No, no, that's the tax, man. There's one, it's in, it's in Mr. Dubay's series of, uh, where it's, and when you see that, you'll recognize it.
In this one?
It should be.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, Mr. Dougherty's got some.
Is this what we're looking?
He's got some stuff.
Okay. Different from what we got here?
In addition.
I think it's, a lot of it's duplicates, but the pink page may be easy to get here. It's only.
We'll share.
Sure.
No, 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 we're really battling. I can't manage another.
I think it's this one, right?
Yeah, I think you're right.
It looks like, yeah, they tried, what number is that?
All right, what do you want us to see on the pink page?
Just as you see the, uh, the area that's highlighted in pink. I know the lots of the former approved plan are red. Uh, that Mr. Dubay has shaded that area, uh, where the relief we're seeking this evening would be located. As you will notice, the old plan were built out. Uh, not only would there be a road in this particular area, it'd be inundated with homes that certainly would, uh, uh, create more runoff and impervious and are much closer to, uh, A's road. So it's just to, to, just to give you a, a visual of what that would look like under the old plan. And it's in the, generally the same area.
So the left, that's Route four?
Yes. Yes, and, and under this plan, you'll see they didn't have an access coming off of Route four on the left. It was the, where we are calling the emergency access now.
This is not what you're proposing.
No, no, this is just to show a contrast to what could be, right? So.
So this, this is what you might have asked for if you stuck with the original plan.
That's correct.
But you like us to see that you're asking for less than your original answer.
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
When you say original plan, are you referring to, uh, the most recent set of the, are you, or back? Cause I know there've been various iterations of this, which one are you talking about?
That's a great question because I've, maybe there was an original plan way, way back and I haven't done the title back. My understanding is this subdivision that's shown on this was, uh, approved sometime in the two thousand.
Okay.
I don't know if it was two thousand four, five, sometime in that era.
That group, okay, it's been through several things, okay.
Two thousand eight came along and it probably was not productive to build it at that particular time, so.
That your development?
No, 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 the prior owners.
You haven't changed anything from.
No, nothing, nothing's changed to, from what we've presented to you. This is maybe more confusing than I thought it would be and I apologize.
That's right.
No, it's me, I apologize for, for showing it. It's just as the chair said, a contrast to, so the relief we're asking tonight is much less that would have been required under that old plan.
You're offering us some, you're offering us some relief.
Yeah, well, potentially, I mean, we still would have had to have gone through that process and uh, assuming that it did, because this got approved, is my understanding with this plan. Uh, Mr. Hurley's report is comprehensive, uh, he's been doing this for a long time. I think he's recognized as one of the leaders in the industry. He provides a scientific analysis of the types, the low quality of the wetlands and how this will not provide a a wetland or impact, negative impact that will create a, a problem or evaluation issue. And I think by reading his report.
That's here with us right now.
Yes, Miss E. here.
The green was the way it's gonna look.
That's correct.
I can tell the difference between green and.
Not everyone can. This is actually.
Thank you.
Which one of these maps and packets will show us the locations that you intend to fill, the ten locations?
The big ones, well.
Relevant.
And then. I'll show you here.
You have one that shows simply and clearly?
Uh, yes, I do.
Add one here.
So if you start on page two of this set and as you look at it.
You're just on it. Well, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna let them get their place and then I'll start.
You want us in page two?
Yeah, I think page two is a that says sheet two of fifteen on it. The, the numbers are on the bottom right. Bottom right in small print.
About this, after the presentation is done, I'll call a recess and anybody that wants to, the audience could get up and come look at these maps up here, since you don't have copies of your own. Um, we're looking at them and once you get up close with your reading glasses on, you can see he's got callouts that show exactly where the impact area would be, so where they're just, where they're wanting to fill. And it shows you how many square feet and the reduction, I'm not sure, again, that's.
That's from, that's from the original, well, the regular numbers, okay? So if we start on the left and you look at the primary access there out on Route four, you travel down that road, uh, say quarter of the way in on the page, yeah, just below the water tower, you'll see a box that says impact one. And in it, it said seventeen hundred square feet. And below it, it says four hundred square foot of reduction. Does everyone see that?
Yes.
You got that.
Maybe we could just stop talking about the reduction and the change from the original plan at this point. Let's just focus on what you're asking for, not how much better it is than what you could have offered. Let's just take that as.
Fine.
As.
Question, like, the water tower's up there and the road that you're gonna use is also the road to the water tower and it's existing and belongs to the town? How, when you, when you go to the water tower and you drive up that road, that belongs to the town, to the water tower?
That's an easement, um, to the water tower.
That the property owner gave, gives to the town.
Is it a question of curiosity or is it relevant to our district?
Town road?
No.
It's not a town road. And the whole issue with the, with roads and easements, you know, generally if I give a person an easement, I can use that property and improve it even, as long as I don't disturb what the intended use was for the beneficiary of the easement holder. Uh, we may have to, at planning, they may want us to go to the selectmen just to, to make sure everybody's on the same page. And we would do that as a courtesy anyway. Think we can make some improvements to give them better access to the water tower, better and safer in this process. Uh, but we don't see that what we're proposing to do would impair any of the rights granted by the easement and it's relatively a non-issue, I think, for zoning board and planning and maybe a clarification concern for the selectmen. Uh, so as we move, uh, into the development, you'll see, uh, at the center of the page, kind of up on top, it says impact two, twenty-four hundred square feet. There's a line there that connects to the black dot. That's the area of where the fill is. Each one of these boxes has a connection to a black dot.
And what that area is, there is a intermittent stream that runs through that area. And in those areas there, we're proposing to put a four-foot, uh, box culvert, open bottom, so that the critters can still migrate and, and traverse through that area. So those are the two, um, box culvert crossings that are required. And if you, if you look at that area there, you see that square and the circle in the middle, that's your water tower.
Yeah.
And, uh, so now the access, if you look at just to the left of the water tower, you're gonna see the, the roadway come to the water tower and then turn around there. That's the new town access to a paved, um, access to their water tower. Rather than, you, you've seen the road that goes up there now, it's pretty, pretty rugged. So, uh, that would no longer be needed because it could traverse on these roads. It'll be maintained and plowed and, and will be, um, paved.
Well, are the blue spots ponds?
Those, those are, what those are were retention ponds and detention ponds that control the drainage on the site.
As we move further, you'll see impact three is four hundred square feet.
So when you talk about the culvert, does this mean that that is taking runoff under the road through culverts?
Right now, the water runs in a brook, uh, seasonal brook.
Right.
Okay, it's not running now.
Right.
Uh, and then what we do, we'll build a culvert over that to not interrupt that flow. So whenever it does flow, it'll, it'll flow under those culverts, actually box culverts, they're four feet wide, four feet high. And, uh, the bottoms are open so that whatever traverses through there now, uh, or migrates through there now will migrate later.
Okay.
Okay? And they're very common, there, you, you probably drove over thirty of them coming here.
Sure.
You know, they're very common, some are cement bottoms and some are open bottoms. But we propose an open so that turtles, frogs or whatever can come on through.
Would you, uh, give us an explanation for impact number three? Is that also a box culvert or what is that?
No, that's not a box culvert, that's just the impact of the wetland finger.
Well, there's a black dot there above the number three.
On this map. If you can see the finger sticking into the dolphin area.
The black dot is only the direction.
The red thing is what is essentially described to that area.
Oh, the little red.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the, yeah, that's the. That would be the impact area.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
That's right, that doesn't mean you're gonna, everything within the red box is gonna be filled. It's just, that's the area in which.
That'll be temporarily disturbed.
Got you, temporarily disturbed. Is that what you're doing, all the blasting?
No, we're not talking about any of that. Sunny guy. We hope not to see that happen in it.
We go over to the next page, you'll see, uh, three appear again.
One is two.
And then we go out to four, which is in the area of the access roadway. Four and five, you see three thousand feet for five and the largest one in total here is the twenty thousand square foot one, uh, impact number four.
Yeah, what, explain the number four, cause that's quite extensive and it looks as if it.
Yeah, well, we'll wake up. Level four?
Yeah, yeah, what's happening?
Emergency access.
Yeah, that's the, that's the disturbance of the whole length of the, um, emergency access.
Okay.
It's not the whole, it's, it's shown as a box, see? The box, the.
Is that all the way down that emergency access, is that seasonal or is it?
Down the year round, that's a gated, locked. That'll be year round, that's a gated, locked.
No, 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 I'm just saying, the reason it's considered wetlands, is it wet all the time?
That's a good question, uh, maybe Luke.
Eric, come on up. This is Luke Hurley.
Early, early, I'm a wetland scientist.
Yes, Luke Hurley, uh, Hurley Environmental Wetland Scientist. Be along, I'll go quick. It's a wetland because it meets all three parameters for a wetland to have fifty percent more wetland vegetation, wetland hydrology and the wetland soils. It's not, like this year, it's probably not soggy down there at all, last year it was probably soggy every day. So it is seasonally saturated is the way we look at it. So in the springtime, it's a little soggy, the summer it dries out, typical fall is not so much this one, it's usually soggy again. So it is seasonally, we're gonna use the word soggy, not very scientific, but seasonally soggy. In the summertime, it dries out, but the characteristics that we look for don't change, they're there all year long. It's just the evidence that we look for in order to do the delineation meets all three criteria. But it's not wet and raining all the time.
So, so where does the water go when you fill in that area? I mean, okay, so you're gonna fill it in, they're gonna raise it, they're gonna, what, where would the, would the water gonna flow on the side of it or?
Yeah, it'll still be, I mean, it's groundwater.
Spread out.
Yeah, it's, it's from the top of the hill, they're coming down and it's groundwater, but it comes up where the groundwater is high, when it's low and it drops back down the aquifer. Then it's not visibly present, so it'll, it'll just find its way. It is not a lot of drains, when you come down here to the bottom of it, the slope is more gradual, it's gently down the bottom. The top, it's steeper, but when you bring down the bottom, it's lower, so the wetland's still gonna kinda hang out.
It's very pit and boundy down.
It would spread out. Yeah, oh yeah, there's plenty of places for it to go, it's not gonna all of a sudden come down the hill faster or flood anybody else because that access would have been.
With the gravel, some of it's gonna absorb.
Yeah, well, after, with the gravel, some of it will implicate when it rains out, yeah, well.
Is the road slope downhill anyway because this is up on top, it's always gonna, and if you look at the foot of the hill, like I do, you've got water.
Yeah.
Hey Mike, just a question, do you wanna us to be asking questions now or wait until the very end? I heard you say that earlier, but I have questions, but I didn't hold them unless you tell me.
I appreciate that, uh, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted, I just, I just don't want it to devolve into a. Into a. Are you a hydrologist?
I'm not, a wetland scientist, hydrologist is entirely different. Um, I do look at groundwater evidence in the wetland delineation aspect, but a hydrologist deals more with groundwater levels and where's the aquifer and what's that fluctuation, I don't, I take some of that science into account when I do the delineation, but I don't study it. In the hydrological aspect, that's completely different.
Thank you, appreciate that. Have we consulted with a hydrologist on this project?
Not at this point, what we're, what we're waiting on, this is a, this is like a step-by-step process.
Yeah.
Okay, so for us to get to one step.
Yeah.
We have to get approvals at one step, then now we get special exceptions, we go to the next step. So then the following, but I think to get to your answer, um, if, if we're successful in getting, uh, what we needed tonight, then, uh, we do a regular whole wetland hydrology survey, do we set up the file with DES, we set up the file with, uh, AOT. So all of this stuff will come up, uh, along the, the process.
But we're asked to, to render an opinion tonight based on the information we're presented. My background is not environmental science by a long shot. Um, so it's much evidence that I can see from independent sources is helpful, without that evidence, I can't just automatically say, oh yeah, you're gonna do that.
I, no, I appreciate that, and, but, um, the boards that have come up behind us from tonight, okay, uh, also very concerned about that. And they're the ones that oversee that hydrology, the designs, uh, of, of everything, so DES will be a big player. Okay, it isn't like you're gonna say, hey, go ahead and we don't, we just go do what we wanna do. We still have to comply with DES, we have to comply with AOT. There are, uh, so the whole state will look at this thing very closely, we're not at that level yet. Okay, we have to proceed, do we have a, do we have a project?
No, thank you.
The way that we've handled that and other ZBA issues, when you kind of look at the criteria that you have and
Yeah.
I know they put the ZBA in the spot to look at it the first instance and then you get to the planning board is, uh, we've had ZBAs condition it that when you get to the planning board, that you recommend that a full hydrology, uh, study be done. So that's a condition that you would place on any approval that you might see fit to issue.
We could put that as a criteria for things we want approved or the planning.
Thank you.
You, you can put any condition you want on, within reason, uh, you can put a condition on any relief that you grant, you have that discretion. So I, other cases that we've had this where, um, we had wetland issues, usually wouldn't, there's wells, there's not wells here, there's public water.
Yeah.
But in cases where, uh, people are concerned, and I'm thinking one in Wyndham where they were low-quality wells to begin with and people were fearful that a, a new subdivision went in, it would dry out their wells. So the ZBA grants an approval on a condition that a hydrology study is done, but in, in connection with the planning process.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Hurley, would you tell us the quality grades of wetlands briefly and give an example of each, like this is low quality?
Well, yeah, as Attorney Corinna had mentioned, it's up. And he's right, it's not the wetlands' fault that it has low functions and values, that's its nature, it's just the way it goes. So, there's low, medium and high quality wetlands and that goes by the functions and bands. So the functions are, what functions does it provide, is it flood flow alteration, is it sediment trapping?
What?
Flood flow alteration, I've just given you a couple of random ones. Um, sediment trapping, nutrient trapping, um, shoreline stabilization, those are functions, what does the wetland do? Then there's the values, which are what values does it provide, does it provide production export, which is food sources for critters? Is there habitat, uh, it's well-independent wildlife habitat. Uniqueness, there's, um, the rare species value, so those are the values, so there's functions and values. So when we do the assessment and it's in my report, it's based on the highway methodology, which is from the Army Corps of Engineers, um, and the form that's in there is the DES form, which is derived from the highway methodology, they changed the numbers around and changed some of the names. Um, so we go down that list, there's numbers that correspond to it, I apologize, those numbers aren't in there. Um, but for, for what we do, cause we have to match up each form, we have the federal method, we have the state form, and then it will say, for example, production export. And then I go down the list of, are there seeds, flowering plants for nectar, are there, you know, buried nut sources, so that's production export. Does it produce something the wildlife can eat, yes or no? So it's, you know, in the report, you can look at, there's a couple in there, um, there's one for the stream. And there's one for the large wetland out back, there's only two wetland types, so there, there's the intermittent stream. And then there's the big, large wetland out in the back, which has all the fingers, but it's the big wetland down the bottom. So that's all one system, all those impacts in the back are to one system, they're not different wetland types, if that makes sense. So, as you go down the functions and values assessment, and as I say, it's in the, yes.
Can you guys hear back there? Okay, go ahead.
So as you go down the functions and values assessment, you go down through, the more numbers in each box, the higher that function or value. Some of them are empty because it doesn't provide that, like one of them is, as I said, wildlife habitat and that's wetland dependent wildlife habitat, so, you know, ducks, fish, plants, snails, you know, other aquatic organisms, is there the potential for them there? Well, no, because there's no standing water. The intermittent stream doesn't provide any because it dries up. So you're not gonna get any fish, you might get a ballad in there on the spring if there's some water. Um, but for the most part, so that's the way we rank it, it's low, medium or high. These will all rank low based on that, it's, it's very marginally subjective because we look at the numbers based on the core method. And then we look at the forms, as, as I say, it's in here. Okay, so. Everything. So if you, you don't, you can thumb through it, but if you look at the one for the large wetland in the back.
Page number.
Um.
Page number?
It's, it's three out of five, but it's the second, um, formative, so it's. Yeah, yeah, exactly, so it's got, so this is, it's got more numbers in it, so the numbers correspond to whether or not that function or value is present. The one, the, the easiest way to explain it is the more numbers, the higher that function of value. So this one that has, uh, more numbers through each box in it, that's because it's the large wetland out back, typically larger wetlands have higher and more functions and values. Um, smaller wetlands have very little. The other thing that I explained to conservation is it also considers where the wetland is in the landscape. Where these wetlands are, the contributing water to them is mostly seeps that come out of the hillside. Um, cause it's just groundwater, that when the springtime, it comes out, it kinda seeps out of the ground and then it drains down. Um, I think there has been some influence because of the logging that was out there. But one of the other things we have to keep in mind is where is it in the landscape? Since this large wetland is in the back, there's no real development near it. So there's not a lot of source for nutrients, there's not a lot of source for sediments, there's not a lot of source for pathogens, which are all in these, and as I say, when you go through the report, you can match everything up. As I say, because they're in the back, there's not a lot of potential for these negative impacts to the wetlands, so if it's not near anything, so if it's surrounded by development, parking lots, urban areas, roads, there's a lot of contribution of stuff in there, so the wetland has the capacity to treat that stuff, cause that's what wetlands do. Uh, but here, when you're in a natural setting, even though it's been logged, it's essentially out in the woods, so there's no potential for these, you know, harmful chemicals or whatever to get into them. So that also limits the number of functions and values, does that make sense?
It does.
As opposed to if you have, if Central Park was a wetland in the middle of New York City, it's getting all that stuff, you would never wanna fill that in because it's acting like a treatment to it. Um, so that's, it's kind of a long, roundabout way to answer your question, but these ones were qualified as low functions and values. And one of the other things that's, I think, important to keep in mind is, out of the total wetlands that are on site, we're proposing impacts only four point eight percent of all the wetlands that are out there. Uh, we're also impacting the higher fringes, which is what we always do, we state at the upper edge of the wetlands, we don't come right in it. If the developer and the engineer came to me and said, we wanna come right in down the bottom, we're just gonna come right in down the bottom, I'd say, you're crazy. Move it to the top, get to the higher, low, lower functioned values areas of the wetlands. So we're minimizing our impacts and that's what they had already done, you know, from the beginning was to really push it up to the top, but they're gonna have to do some grading, but the higher function and value portions, the bigger part down the bottom is still gonna be preserved, cause that whole buffer and that hillside is coming from the development when they do that grading, it's all gonna be vegetated, it's all gonna be naturalized, it's gonna be left on its own. Um, and the detention bases that they're proposing are also gonna treat all that stormwater, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just one.
Yeah, sure.
Give me a real quick.
Yeah, I'll try, yes.
I have a concern that there's a wildlife corridor that goes right through here. Would that increase the, uh, the value of the, what, the wetland area?
It, it, it does and it doesn't. They, when you look at this, what it asks for is, and it's specific to where it asks for the, so number fourteen, if you look at either of the forms, number fourteen is wetland-dependent wildlife habitat. Um, and it's, as I say, when the DES put this form together, they took the US highway methodology terms and changed them, we don't know why, but they did, but it still means the same thing, so the wildlife habitat is wetland-dependent wildlife habitat. It's, you know, as I said before, is there any water, standing water in there that a wetland-dependent critter, whether from an insect to, you know, a beaver, is it gonna be using that and is there gonna be any impact to that? Now, there may be a corridor going through, but as we get further and further in the process with the state and the feds, we're gonna have to work a fishing game on that, um, if there's any impact, any wildlife corridors or what, they still have areas to go through, but it's only for wetland-dependent. Not that the other ones don't matter, but that's what we focus on when we do the functions and values, it's wetland-dependent because we're impacting wetlands. There's no, besides alteration of terrain, which governs the upland impacts, there's no regulations against.
So we could be impacting wildlife, but for the purposes of this discussion, we'd only be looking at the wetland-dependent.
Correct. Yeah, we're not, for the wetland application portion of it, that deals with the wetlands aspect only, not upland. And as I say, that's fishing game as we move forward and we do all, I do all those reports and the coordination back and forth with them and.
But you're saying that ninety-six percent of the wetlands that's there now will still be there when this is over, you're only impacting four percent?
Correct, four point eight percent, the total wetlands on site were impacted. Cause a lot of that area in the back is being put into open space conservation, so if there's a lot of wetlands back there, it's all just being kept. All that natural land and stuff back there, so.
Forty-eight percent.
Forty-eight percent, yeah.
It's just math.
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, I guess, I mean, it's, it's in my letter in the top, yeah.
It would seem to me that since this is an emergency access and used very little, that it wouldn't impact non-wetland wildlife at all, though.
No, they'll go right over it, yeah, they'll walk right back and forth over any large, I mean, there's, when I've been out there during my various portions of field, like a lot of large mammals are using it and they'll just walk right over that.
Yeah, we got a lot of deer and they're all over the place.
And there won't be any need for any culverts or anything through that access road because there's no water going this way, the water's going this way, see, any critters want, even if it's small stuff, they can just go right over it. There is gonna be no traffic on there because it's not, it's gated, it's emergency only, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it makes sense that it won't make a whole lot of difference to the surroundings.
Not exactly.
Cause it's just a little stripe down the middle.
All right. Let me, let me check, is there anything more that you guys wanna talk about in your presentation?
I can, if you follow that plan, and I'm looking at, uh, the sheet three of fifteen, you can see the other areas and they're associated with the dots and the purple outline. And they're all, you know, relatively the same, let's say it's, it's the fingers. And self-explanatory in terms of the area.
Right, uh, if you're done, I wanna give our audience a chance to get up and have a look at the map.
Is there anything else?
Particularly there, cause we just, keep in mind from here, we still have fishing game, DES.
Understand.
Yeah, we have a, a lot to go through from there.
We understand, yeah, okay, just like you.
Thanks.
Mr. Hurley, it's nice to have a soil scientist, an actual honest-to-God, credentialed soil scientist talk to us, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm flattered.
It's really nice, you hear a lot about it.
One player out, we'll have people some space.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we're gonna recess for some minutes. And when I see people no longer wanting to look at pictures, I will call us back to order. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so you had mentioned that there's a letter from the Conservation Commission.
Mm-hmm.
Can we, can we read that?
Yeah, I'll read it out after the, after the break, how's that sound? Okay, and if I forget, would you remind me?
I.
Yep, yeah, yeah, we'll read those out. Thank you.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
No, I was gonna say, they're taking.
Gotcha. No, I'd rather not give a pardon.
So that should be. It was just giving them a license to build it for the DES.
DES, don't be all over this. They don't have permission, like, from us to proceed.
Yeah, they can't go through steps, so.
Probably actually, four, four. Wow, when, near. Uh, ninety, I think sixteen. Other people know that. Oh boy. We're all born for a reflection at this. The oldest in college and, uh, the little one. Yeah. Yeah. He's probably not gonna go to Thanksgiving, yeah.
No, it happens.
Yeah, I mean, he gets time. He's. How old was the little one? Uh, he's sixteen. Yeah, well, he works quite a bit. He actually has more friends than work.
Honestly, we're lonely, empty, and so is another.
And don't rush it.
All the birds will be out flying around.
Yeah, it's true, it's a little bit hard.
It's not so bad. We've been in investors our whole life, so, yeah.
You figure out ways to fill it up, believe me.
Yeah.
Is there a way to?
Yeah.
It make.
Let's ask Rob.
Ask Rob, but then it puts that slower on, it makes so much noise.
You can choose to hear well or be warm. That's the, it's the reality of this world, being on a crew.
Ridley's cold, I'm cold.
I'll be cold until spring.
We can't pardon dogs. But today was. But today was really bad, wasn't it?
Oh, my God, so warm today.
Oh, we're out at the dog park. It's turned to frozen death in my 50 degree park.
The Z B A shall not require submission of an application for or receipt of affirmative permits from other state.
Do you need to do findings of fact for special?
I'm writing stuff down. Yeah. Yep. I think that's a good idea all the time.
That wetlands thing was fascinating. Thank you. I learned a lot. Well, you probably already knew it.
What he said?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I live at the foot of a hill where the water runs down into the house and out to the river. And there's no water in the river.
Rob.
Really, really low. At least behind my house, it's really, really low.
I'm right over the pretty.
That, that little cut off creek behind Alice's house is dry.
I was surprised how fast Crystal Lake dropped too. I mean, usually it's slow going down.
Yeah.
This year, once they took the thing out, bam, it went down. There was no feet coming down.
They dropped the lake in the year though. Yeah.
But there was no feet coming down. It dropped on, so the water was in the lake with it. Yeah, I think we can, eleven may have problems.
Your flashlight is on.
It goes on by itself. Yes, my dance institute.
It's the lake too.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's down fourteen. I mean, you go across the bridge. And you look down at the dam, you'll see the mark where it's eight feet down.
Bridge where there's, uh, where it's flood stage and high water and barrels. Four feet up. Yeah. Well, we walked there in the morning. What's really fucking me is they stole that piece of land off Hillberry Street to the rail trail in the river. And it includes the foundation of the bedstead factory. The, the foundation of the bedstead factory along the river is in that piece of land they're selling. It's just there. It's just hard to go there every year.
You, you know, the other thing though, as a, I swear, I don't want to lie about building that piece of land. Just because if you have a bunch of kids who are up there, out onto land, you know, the kids go there. The one kid, Rob, right here, a couple of years ago.
Really?
Heard off that rock. Yeah. I mean.
Well, when the kid is right instead, they're very well supervised.
Yeah, but you know, that's a problem. Do you want the town to be supervising that area?
I want the town to own that piece of land rather than some private guy that may tear that foundation out. Because I think that that foundation is part of Enfield's history and needs to stay there.
Yeah. Maybe somebody will build a high rise on top of it.
Rob was saying there was a place to put a little house.
A little house on the.
And the, the, the town can put the parking lot across the street where they killed the Japanese. That sump across the street.
Yeah.
Is dry.
Looks like we're about ready to resume. We have everybody here who's going to participate in the discussion.
Rob, is it possible to make it warmer in here without the floor?
Already discussed that. We have already discussed that. I think the consensus is we'd like to hear more than we'd like to sweat.
My knees be warm.
I don't want a shiver.
All right, is the recording going on? Yep. Is the minute taker ready to minute?
Yes.
Right. Ms. Buffay asked that I read some stuff into the record. Ms. Buffay, did you get a chance to read these letters yourself?
Yeah.
You did? Anybody else see the applicants? Have all seen it? Jones Alphas, Ted, have you seen these?
Just got them.
Okay. Uh, Celia, you've seen them. Everybody else is cool.
I haven't. I haven't read it either.
All right.
It's probably want to get ready for the record anyway, and Whitney can just scan them.
Yeah, Whitney can. They're already in the record.
Yep.
Um, but I'll read them out loud for the attendees of the meeting, especially on the, on the phone. So here we have a letter from the Enfield Conservation Commission to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Uh, dated November eighth, two thousand twenty-four, the year of our Lord. Enfield Zoning Board of Adjustment. The Enfield Conservation Commission appreciates the opportunity to have input regarding the Laramie Farms Wetlands Crossing. On October third, Conservation Commission meeting, Carl Dubay and Stephen Doherty shared information about the project regarding wetlands crossings and ponds. October twenty ninth, Commission members met with Mr. Doherty for a site tour of three developments. One developed 20 years ago, one 10, and one currently being developed. We saw examples of wetland crossings, ponds to catch stormwater runoff, animal crossings, retaining walls, rock berms, et cetera, et cetera. Um, my, I'm guessing that Ms. Green is, is telling us that the commission went to see the kind of work these folks do. Does that sound right? Applicants. Okay. That's my own editorial comment.
Shirley.
Shirley is nodding online. Hi, Shirley. You want to help her with the microphone? She might want to say something.
I'm on.
November's. Hey, Shirley, do you want to say something about this or shall I keep reading?
Keep reading.
Okay, ma'am.
I've been there tonight, but I had hand surgery today, so I couldn't. But, uh, no, I'd like you to read it, please. Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Uh, for those who aren't aware, Shirley Green is the Chair of the um, Enfield Conservation Commission. She's attending on the phone, as I like to call it. November seventh, Conservation Commission meeting, Carl Dubay, Stephen Doherty, and Luke Hurley. We met Mr. Hurley earlier, provided answers in more detail to questions from our initial meeting on October third. The following points were discussed at the November seventh meeting. Point number, the first, the developer, since our initial meeting, ten third, ten three, has reduced the overall wetlands impact of the project by eighteen thousand five hundred square feet from seventy-six thousand six hundred to fifty-eight thousand one hundred square feet. The smaller number, fifty-eight thousand one hundred square feet, which is what they're asking for today, is 4.8% plus or minus a fraction of the total wetlands on the site. The commission had not asked them to do this, by the way. Uh, point number two, detail about how the water is treated at various points along the wetland impact areas. Three, plans to conserve land around the development. Seventy-seven acres of which, uh, seventy-seven acres is the development, of which forty acres would be put into conservation, open space protection. They plan to ask for Conservation Commission input. She's got a parenthetical question, conservation needed restrictions. I think that's something they, they'll be looking into. By the way, this is meant to give the Z B A an, an idea of what the Conservation Commission considered. It's not meant to give us the detail of everything that they discussed. That's the point of this. Natural revegetation along wetland impact areas. An additional aspect of the project is the proposal to re-vegetate all the areas along the fill slopes with native vegetation and allow it to grow and remain neutral.
That's true.
Natural and remain natural. This will provide an additional buffer to those wetlands not impacted as part of the development. Did you notice I omitted the comma in my reading? Regular pond and water catchment maintenance responsibility or schedule, this is another point. Conservation Commission would like clarification of maintenance responsibility and timeline schedule. Uh, to, to do a second to the last point, hydrology studies throughout the site. C C recommends that the study of the water distribution system, movement, and quality be done by a hydrologist. Think, um, Dan asked about that earlier. Conservation Commission has got your back, buddy. Last point, building up versus out to reduce the impact on the land. We've heard that from the developers before, the idea that concentrating the development into a few small or a few larger buildings rather than lots of houses is better for that area. On behalf of the Enfield Conservation Commission, Shirley Green, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Green. Is there anything you'd like to say additionally?
Uh, no, not really. Those were the points that we discussed that we felt were important to point out. They were important for the, uh, uh, zoning board of adjustment to consider. And we just, do you have any questions?
I have one. Mr. Regan has a question.
In the section that says the developer, since our initial meeting, ten three, reduced the overall wetland impact of the project by eighteen thousand five hundred square feet, how did you do that?
My name is Carl Dubay, uh, with the Dubay Group, uh, engineers. We, uh, when we made the initial application, uh, to the Z B A, we had, uh, preliminary designs, including grading and, and all of that. And then, uh, we had time actually to revisit the plan and fine tune the plan. So we could actually fine tune and reduce wetland impacts uh, with stabilized slopes, uh, with just more detail. Uh, we had sewer lines and drainage put in and, uh, more confidence in the plan because this is sort of a, like Mr. Doherty expressed, it's sort of a stepwise function in design. The further along with the design we go, the more tight we can get things, the more refined we can get things, the more uh, confidence we have getting all the utilities and the drainage and everything else, uh, the water pavements, the ponds and all that. So with the, uh, the wetland impact areas, we paid special attention to those because we believe that the Conservation Commission, as well as the town would like to see us reduce impacts where we can and we, indeed, we could. And where we did, um, we reduced impact. So that was a good thing. So we knocked off like eighteen thousand square feet of, of that just with more refined design. And you have all that information with you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Regan, anything else?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Welcome. I do appreciate the time that we had to, uh, to be able to observe and find out more in more detail information about the project. It was very useful, very helpful.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to point out that the, uh, the comments that were issued, uh, we fully, uh, agree with. Uh, commission, we just saw them ourselves. And, uh, uh, we intend to fully, uh, follow up on that. That would be part of the process of going into a final design.
Another step up the staircase of the project.
Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Uh, Shirley, I was impressed by the diligence you guys put into going out to see the kind of work that they had done and, and, uh, meeting with them numerous times. Please thank your group for us. Okay, moving on, we have a letter from the Town of Enfield Building Inspection, Fire, and Health Department. Um, Vinnie Tursi, Inspector Inspector and Health Officer. October second, two thousand twenty-four memo, R E Housing Project one oh seven Maple Street. He writes, I reviewed the Z B A application for appeal and would like some clarification on the following. Will the gated emergency entrance be paved or stone surface? I'm concerned with adding an additional impervious surface to a neighborhood that currently has struggles with water runoff. Would like to keep the impact, the neighborhood to a minimum. The plans for any catch basins appear to be geared towards the opposite side of the proposed property. Um, I think we know that the plan now is for the entrance to the emergency road and in fact, the entire road surface to be gravel rather than impervious surface. Hmm. Okay. Last thing we have is from McKeon Appraisal Services Incorporated, a letter written October seventh to. He mentioned it, yes.
Yeah.
Did Attorney Cronin read this already?
Not in its entirety. I made reference to it.
Does anybody want to hear this in its entirety? Okay. John Cronin Esquire, seven twenty-two Chestnut Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, oh three, one oh four, R E D C Development and Construction LLC. Property location, many numbers and symbols, the Laramie Farms property. Dear Attorney Cronin, pursuant to your request, I review the information provided in the most recent application for special exception. The request for special exception is to allow wetlands to be filled for the purpose of creating roads, driveways, and utilities in a manner that will minimize detrimental impacts on wetlands. You've asked me to render an opinion as to whether the filling of these wetlands will have any negative impact on the value of neighboring or surrounding property. I have reviewed engineering work done by the Dubay Group Incorporated, which indicates that from the houses on Maple Street to the wetland finger impacts, the distances are all over six hundred feet. The distances are all in excess of six hundred feet. It is my understanding that the design will incorporate a full drainage management program in accordance with state regulations, which will mitigate the pre and post-development flows. Based on my thirty-five years of experience as a residential appraiser in New Hampshire, coupled with my education and training, it is my opinion that the filling of wetlands that are six hundred feet or more away from the closest neighboring homes, assuming a full drainage management program will be in place, will not diminish the value of the surrounding residential properties. Respectfully submitted, Mark H. McKeon, President, N H C R dash oh three. I believe that is his, uh, appraiser license number. Uh, I want to point out that he's talking about, he's not talking about the whole project will not diminish. Though he has rendered that opinion earlier. He's saying in this case, in this particular case, the, uh, filling of these wetlands would not diminish property values. So this is, this is our professional opinion about one of those criteria. I think that's all I got. Yes, sir.
In that, on Dr. Titus, in that letter, did he mention what was a suitable drainage uh, proposal to mitigate the water accumulating in those wetlands?
He did not. I wouldn't expect him to.
But that would be an important part.
He does say that.
Pardon?
He does say that, Dr. Titus. It is my understanding that the design will incorporate a full drainage management program. Is that what you want?
Do the developers recognize the necessity of doing?
I believe that what he's saying is that he's, he's saying if they do it right, including that point, then it will not affect the property values. And that, that's what we're interested in.
But there is no designation of what doing it right really mean.
I, is that his job?
It's not.
All I wanted to say.
Right.
But I can clarify that, Mr. Chair.
It's okay. That's not necessary.
It will be an A O T permit. That's a state standard. A O T and U P, uh, U P A SWIP. That's standard.
All right. Where are we next? The next.
I have a question.
The next part of this would be, let me get my thoughts in order first. Just a matter of process. All right. So we had the hearing. We've read that stuff in order. You have a, a here, you have a question about the hearing? I mean, about the presentation, because we're going to discuss separately, but I want to give the public an opportunity to offer.
We'll bring it up in the discussion.
Great, thanks. Great, thanks. Okay, so board, we are not done with our talking. We haven't begun our deliberations. We're going to hear from the public. Then I'll ask the board for a motion. Either to deny or approve. Then we'll discuss that motion. And then we'll decide whether we're going to continue this to another hearing or we're going to take it to a vote tonight. Okay, just letting you know what's on my mind. Because it is eight ten. Okay, when anybody in the public like to speak, raise your paw hand. Sharon Buffet, I saw you had your hand first.
Thank you very much, everybody. I'm here as a resident of Maple Street and I have concerns about the impact of this on Maple Street. This may be considered a low value wetland. I can't argue that. But I can agree with our building inspector's statement that a neighborhood along, all along Maple Street is a neighborhood that currently has struggles with water runoff. So you really can't minimize the impact that the water coming off that hill through that wetland already has on that neighborhood. And changing that in any way could have further impact. I think I was part of the developer's presentation to the Conservation Commission. I think it was much more detailed than the presentation this evening, for whatever reason. When you as a board start to look at your plans and discuss the plans, what I suggest you look at that I'm most concerned about are the three apartment buildings at the back of the, I don't think that's the back of the property. That's the back of the developed part of the property. There are at least four wetland crossings that come down from that hill through that slope that come into the back of the properties that are along that property line border. You can see them marked on, they're very clearly marked on this one on the table or the wall. I have something that other people received at another meeting. They're not as clearly marked on this because the trees are so dark, you can't really see them. So if you're considering them, I suggest you look at that lighter version. And one of the things that the developer discussed with the Conservation Commission that was pointed out repeatedly by the Conservation Commission was, okay, you have retention ponds. You have retention ponds that are over by the townhouses. And you have one retention pond that is in the left-hand corner of the first apartment building. And the developers said that they thought that all the water coming down that hill back below the apartments towards the residences on Maple Street would filter in to that one retention pond to the left of the first apartment building. But what was pointed out was the drainage is below where you have your retention pond and your retention pond is way off to the side. So the road that's, the proposed emergency access road that's going to be built is crosses those four wetland drainage areas, their fingers. But that are filtering down towards the apartment buildings.
That's your time, ma'am.
May I please continue very briefly?
No, ma'am. We'll go to the next person and then if there is some time after that, we'll come back to you.
I would hope so. This is a public meeting. I'm being very brief and very specific for information that's very serious for you to consider.
Who's next? Dr. Buffet?
Having lived on Maple Street for more than forty years and having seen the impact of previous development, however many years it was ago on the water drainage down onto those properties on Maple Street, uphill from us, but that they were substantially impacted by the initial road cut and, and logging there. I have very serious concerns and maybe a hydrologist will be able to answer it, but I don't think they've been adequately answered as yet. By what's been presented.
Thank you, Dr. Buffet. From the back, name, please. We'll go to the phones in just a minute.
One dessert. I live in 18th Ward Farm, right, off from four. I'm not speaking specifically to the wet, some of it's not specifically to the wetlands, but as to the wetlands application. The four criteria that have to be met for you to grant the special exception for the first one. And they claim that it's desirable location because it's on Route Four. And I'd like to know why that's considered desirable, considering there's road audits that speak otherwise. They also talk about how the proposed use will not affect property values. They need report by attorney, the, the one that they just presented only speaks to the properties on Maple Street. I don't live on Maple Street, but there is a wetland that does go into my property. The stream, which is an intermittent stream, but it does a lot of the times in wetter years run year round. It's, they also call it being isolated where it's not isolated. It runs into my property. There's over a third of the property is considered wetlands. I, I agree they're not impacting at all, but it doesn't mean it's isolated. Part of the wetlands that are by that intermittent stream are part on the town property where the water tower is. They did address that because of the easement, they could probably have some agreement to impact those wetlands, even though it's not on their property, it's on the town property. But I feel that should be done before those wetlands are impacted as well. I'm not sure if it's still an easement. If I remember correctly, the deed says the easement was only for construction of the water tower. Once that was done, it was terminated and turned back into the right of way. So the access to the water tower, I believe, is just a right of way now, not a season, but I could be wrong. But also in 2019, Horizon's engineering did a water department assessment management plan, finding critical assets in the water department. And one of the assets cited was the land that the water tower sits on. And it's considered a medium risk asset with high consequence of failure, but a low probability. But if wetlands are right there and they're impacting that, it could change that probability. And I feel that should be looked into or before any very, or special exception is agreed to. I don't know how much of the land that water tower sits on is considered in that risk asset. But it's on the town website dot report. And the last point is.
That's your time.
May I ask Ms. Desert a question?
I'd rather you not. We're going to let, we're going to let people say their piece. You take it into consideration. We can discuss it later. Make it, why don't you make a note of your?
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to know which was her property on the map.
Okay.
Or which one?
Dr. Titus.
I would just like to mention that the Town of Enfield did a 2018 Water Quality Report from the Department of Public Works. At that time, there were three wells that were in operation by water municipal system. The Marshwell, which has a capacity of thirty-six gallons a minute, as is its major aquifer Moose Mountain. Working on Moose Mountain has the potential to interfere with that aquifer. The two wells that have been dug in 2023, according to Mr. Jim Taylor, will not be online for two years. Those are the testing of the water that has to be done before the EPA will allow it to become part of municipal system. So those are aspects of water quality that affect the town. Because everybody here and those particularly on municipal system depend upon those wells for their water.
Finish my notes. Anyone else in the room? See the off the arrow. Your time begins? Now. Three minutes, ma'am.
I know, three minutes. Let me just get my, my, let me just tell you a story about when they were building on Maple Street. The post office went in and we, at that time I was on the Conservation Commission. And we recognized that it was wetland and that the, what came down was increased, would increase because they're putting another building in. So they took up the space for the water to saturate in the, it, well, it made it into a pond. You see ducks. They'll tell you, oh, there's nothing. There's no wetland there. The ducks are floating around. But I remember that and I remember people complaining about water in their basements. And I really, I think there's a lot more going on at that site. But that's not the reason they reminded me that today. But I came in here because it is so important that the, that everybody realizes that Enfield does not want to impact their natural resources. It's in the zoning ordinance, it's in the master plan. And I can read them to you. What we're doing, what this town is doing, is doing exactly what they asked not to do, what we voted on not to do, not to take over, not to impact the natural resources. This project, this place, the property is steep slope at the top. And so there's going to be a lot of work up there and even there's stone and everything else. That's going to impact. Enfield doesn't want this kind of thing. You have lots of places they can build. Not at the top of a mountain where they're going to impact and cause more problems than coming down. And I think everybody should be aware of that. You, if, if you're going to ignore it, then you're against the zoning ordinance and against the master plan.
You've got thirty seconds, ma'am.
Is am I three minutes up?
Thirty seconds.
Thanks.
Just letting you know where you are.
But anyway, I, you know, I could sit here and read them to you. Wait a minute. Okay. The purpose of the master plan is to set down as clearly and practically as possible the best and most appropriate future development of the area under jurisdiction of the planning board.
Okay, we have to stop there. We, we can give you another for the time after.
Craziness. All right.
I am frustrated.
You don't stop somebody in the middle of what they're saying.
I did.
I'm sorry.
I have to apply the rule fairly to everybody.
And for the record, just in case something, but that I've been up, been on a ZBA and I spent the past forty years being on several boards in the Conservation Commission. Many years, I don't even have what the number is. So I'm not coming, you know, and with not knowing anything.
We understand.
I've got one more thing.
Can you save it for your next time around, please?
The value, I've got to tell you this.
I stopped, Mrs. Buffet, and I need to stop you also in fairness. Let me ask you to come back in our second round, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on the phone? You see a hand up anywhere?
Oh, yeah.
All right, I see nobody on the phone asking to speak, so we're going to go back. I believe Ms. Buffet would like another shot at the mic. All right, I'll give you another minute, please, Ms. Buffet.
So both the Conservation Commission and the Health Officer both mentioned that there needs to be regular pond and water catchment maintenance responsibility scheduled. Because really, that's my biggest question after this is built, who's going to pay attention to what happens? And then I also would support Mr. Regan and I would also support the Conservation Commission. We need a hydrology study to figure this out. I'm sorry that you could say that that's going to happen at the planning board level. I'm sorry for the developers that they might get approved tonight and then get disapproved because of the hydrology study. It really should happen before approval so that they know one way or another, can they do this? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Steps on the ladder. Who maintains the, what was the catchment area? Is that what you said?
Regular pond and water catchment maintenance responsibility or schedule.
Okay.
And that was on the Conservation Commission in the back of their feed.
No, I'm just.
And it was also listed in the Realtors, the last line. Full drainage management program will be in place.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? Ms. Offiero, you want to go again?
Yes.
Desert? Okay.
Quickly. When the, the wetland scientist talked about the values, those values is exactly what we had to do for the prime wetlands, not because there are wetlands all, all over. So when you talk to values and he says, well, there's only a few, it doesn't mean they're, you know, they're not good. But the prime wetlands, it was, we had to go out and do all those things. And the other thing is in the zoning ordinance, I want to just write down 101 in the purpose. Letter H to ensure proper use of natural resources and other public requirements. I to abide for harmonious development of the land and its environment. And then there's a 102, location, public cost of future growth. And 103, natural environment. And I'd like you all to redo that in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Are these prime wetlands we're talking about, Mr. Hurley?
I don't believe so.
Ms. Offiero? Okay, thank you.
No, they're not, not on town designated map.
All right. The dessert, did you want to say something else?
Well, last thing I wanted to mention is for, out of the four criteria, the last one to be met, where the proposed use will comply with the applicable regulations of the district, which is located. I feel that's up for debate. The, from what I see, any building with more than five units is considered commercial. Even in the December Planning Board meeting, Mr. Russell stated that as well. And this is the R1 district. The commercial district is, the CB district is not being built in, even though these are apartments and townhomes. From what I see, anything, a building with more than five units is considered commercial. So that's something to be considered to see, is it actual in the correct district?
May I ask, please desert a question?
Let's make sure everybody's had a chance to speak that wants to. I think they have. Okay, I'm not going to close the public hearing because we may want to come back and hear from the public again. But I'm going to move us on to our, our motion and discussion phase during which you may go back to it.
My question.
Chair would like to entertain a motion from a board member to approve or deny, and then we will discuss.
Um, I move that we approve the request of the developer for a special exception to the wetlands.
I think that's good enough to get it started.
Exception they requested.
I think that's good enough to get it started. We have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Just a reminder, the motion usually comes from somebody that supports that position. The second is just, yeah, this is worth talking about. Let's get it up for discussion. All right. Okay, so we. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to, not on the table, we have a motion on the floor to approve the application for a special exception to the Enfield zoning ordinance to allow this developer to fill ten uh, wetlands. Think that's it. Roughly. Discussion? I believe we have a question for Ms. Desert.
Yes, I just wanted, you mentioned something about one of these that was near you, your property and was going to affect your property.
Not necessarily affect my property runs into, so the intermittent stream that goes through their property runs into my property.
So which, which one would, can you just show me on the map? Sorry.
So in fact, I believe one and two.
Okay.
Um, so right here, this, this is my property, so it runs into my property.
Okay.
Which then comes down through the ravine.
Okay.
And I just wanted to, I just wanted to have a clearer picture of that.
I also had a question. May I ask a question? For the, the people, for the presenters of the application. Um, is it my understanding that in the past, the, the land or whatever, the slope behind this that is, you know, the above and so all the waters that, that had been lumbered? Is that something that, and which presumably affected the way the water was running off on and coming through the lower areas onto Maple Street? When was, if that's true, if I understood that properly, has that situation improved over time as there's more vegetation and perhaps the the damage from the logging has, has been reduced over time? And if that's so, is it possible that some of the work here may actually improve the situation with the water going through on Maple Street? Because it sounds as if now it might be managed, whereas in the past it just sort of went wherever it went.
Hi, my name is Carl again. There's some multiple questions.
Yes, there's several questions.
Try to unpack that. There, there was, I think, a border. It's in your packets. There's a picture. Uh, we flew a drone up through the site and you can see a picture here. Of course, but it's in your, it's in your packet.
Page that is.
It's, uh, probably the third, fourth, fourth page in. Might even be a fourth.
Got it. Okay.
So, uh, the site, this site was, uh, logged. Part of the site was logged, which you see here, which is where the bigger wetlands are going. Oh, okay. So, uh, part of the site was logged and also a good majority of the site down gradient from us, downhill from us was also logged. So our site is up here on this slope here. And, uh, development, the, the back end of the development come through here, as someone mentioned. And, uh, that was logged. And there are some wetland fingers that come up these slopes. As you know, you can see those on the plan. They all come through here. As you can see, this tree line, which is an approximate location of a property line that's down gradient from us, downhill from us. And that property next to us downhill from us in this area was also logged, as you can see. And then you can see Maple Street along here and you can see the homes up along Maple Street. Um, I'd just like to point out that the portion of the property that we were talking about, the intermittent stream, that was not logged. That's wooded. And our design stays away from that intermittent stream. We're not putting any flows into it. We're letting the flows go through it from the upper property through our property. I think their property through our property to her property. And with the open bottom box culverts. So you can actually see the corridor through there. There's a sort of like we kept like a wildlife corridor through there. We're not impacting that area at all. Uh, we're impacting around it and then taking care of our own drainage uh, so that it doesn't get into the intermittent stream, you know, unmitigated or anything like that. So that's sort of separate isolate, we call it an isolated design aspect, uh, which we did. We, we're not, uh, we're not touching that intermittent stream, only just going over it with two box culverts. That goes through your property, ma'am, and it goes down on Route four. I was out there tonight, actually in the dark, driving around on Route four on the shoulder and I didn't want to get hit by a car, but I wanted to see that down gradient culvert. Now, it's, but it's a, you know, it's basically a box culvert as well. So we just wanted to see all of that. But I couldn't get down in there and then I had to rush up here, but, uh, I want to get back in there during the day as we move forward with the studies. So when we go into, uh, answer your question. Um, we are required by the Alteration of Terrain Permitting to work with NHGES Wetland Bureau as well as fishing game and all of that. Part of the Alteration of Terrain Permit is a full and complete drainage study. Um, we include many aspects of hydrology study in that study that's required. So I'll give an example to your question. So these, these soils in here and they're, they're also, uh, verified by USGS, uh, NRCS soil typing. They're pretty much soil type C, which is, uh, what you would expect out here, which we found out here, sea soil is it, it can be a, a bleed, it could be a moist soil that, that actually drains out the water coming off of it. Uh, and, uh, that's a soil structure C. We do test pits out there. We do evals. We do calculations. All of that hydrology is actually reviewed by, uh, the Alteration of Terrain Bureau. That's all part of that. Normally a CBA would, if you're doing a special exception for wetland crossings, they would say, and subject to all state permits that are required. And that's all embedded in there. So when we do the hydrology study and the drainage study, all embedded into this. We do the post-development and the pre-development modeling for many, many storms, including, uh, extreme storms. That's all required. And we know that there is water coming off this hill. We don't want to stop that water coming off the hill because we want to actually feed and replenish the, uh, the resource areas that are down gradient from here. Obviously, they go across Maple Street and eventually to the lake. So all of that, the behavior of that, um, gets modeled with lots of calculations that are reviewed. And it includes the hydrology, uh, reporting. And, um, on the post-development, we have a series, not just one, but a series of catchment areas and ponds, uh, all through in between our development and this piece of property here, which is also wooded, uh, that would, uh, basically mitigate those flows with, um, they're all pretreatment. There's a pretreatment. You know, we talked about conservation. I think the you mentioned that we went into a lot of detail with Conservation Commission since they asked us that. We're more than happy to discuss it. We love doing this. And we'll, we've been talking for quite hours about the detail of that.
Let's not.
So we, what we tried to do.
Let's start wrapping it up.
Yeah, keep it to the four criteria, but it's all embedded in the, the, in this, the hydrology and the drainage study is all included in what we do. And, uh, the answer to the question about the ponds and everything is we do take on that flow and then we meter it out at a controlled basis so that we can, uh, dial that in and, and mirror the existing flows. So there are no more and no less. So that, that, so that the wooded areas that are timbered and everything, those are, all these areas below here are going to be in a conservation easement. About half of the property is actually going to be in a conservation easement, which is great. And the better half of that property is adjacent to the town lands and also the wellfields that are out there. So we're actually growing protection. And a lot of times on conservation easements, we would even grant, depending on how this behaves, we would grant the rights for, uh, you know, wells and water protection and radiative for the town for to, to actually supplement their assets. So that's, I know that was another question, but there were some other questions there too. I didn't want to get into it too much, but I wanted to answer your question.
Yeah, no, thank you.
That the timbering does cause many times an increase in flow. And it's, it's funny because they get an intent to cut and they do that and now, but we want to actually want to get that grow in very quickly. It's already started to do that. We had that discussion with Conservation Division. We want to, uh, make sure that that grows in. So our impacts for these crossings, uh, three quarters of the areas of the impacts of the crossings are actually just, uh, revegetated. Naturalized. They won't be lime. They're going to be natural. They're going to be better than what's out there. Uh, and we want those to catch up quickly with the rest of the stuff that's growing in there now. So it all comes back. And, uh, like we're only at four percent of the total wetland area for impact. And of that four percent, uh, I think only four thousand square feet is actually pavement. The rest is all revegetated or emergency access gravel, but super majorities is, uh, revegetated, um, plantings and, uh, naturalization and then put in a conservation easement.
Okay.
Hey, Co, can I get a quick follow up?
If that's okay.
Yeah, yes, yes, I said, no, yeah. Um, when did you first discover that there were wetlands on this property?
We knew there are wetlands on the property from day one because there were some wetlands on the property shown by previous app, applications and approvals.
So it was day one, like five years ago?
Even twenty, twenty-five years ago. So we, we knew that.
Yeah.
But, um, when we advanced the design, we knew there would be wetland impacts for crossings, obviously. I mean, you could see them. We even had them on the plans that we submitted to you for the first round, which was the use and and height and that type of thing. We didn't hide any of this. We didn't discover this at the last minute or anything. But we knew this would be coming in, but under a special exception. Uh, usually towns would say, you know, do, do the first step first is the basic planning and basic variances. Then as you get into by right, special exceptions, and the chair was right, there, there are by rights. You meet those four criteria. You know, that's what you're focused on. Uh, we knew this coming in and they were not hidden on the plans. The wetlands were actually shown. There were bigger impacts than they, we have now. We've actually reduced them, which is great.
I don't recall receiving anything showing that there were wetlands that were going to be disturbed when we, we were through the process.
Yeah.
There we had grading. We had, uh, more information than you normally see for.
Did we have, uh, wetland disruption in the finding of facts? It wasn't necessary. In that case, it wasn't relative, irrelevant to that case, but, um, I, it was, it was a topic. I respectfully disagree that it wasn't relevant. Um, if we look at the five variance criteria, particular criteria. Let me just answer your question. Without, let me just answer your question without a pining. I don't believe. Just a second, please. I don't believe it was in the findings of fact. All right, so it was not in the finding of fact, and I think that was a miss, and I think it was important to those variances. In particular, criteria one, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. The fact that you're disturbing our wetlands is our public interest.
Well, I would tend to disagree, sir, because the, the special exception, if you read the ordinance.
I'm not talking about the special exception. I'm talking about the variance.
Okay, but I'm answering the question.
That's settled. Can we stay here with the special exception and leave the variance in the past?
The, the special exception.
I think this is something we need to have in the notes that we did not have this in our finding of fact. That's, therefore it impacted our ability to address criteria number one.
I, I would respectfully disagree.
Yeah, that is, that is not correct. And just stop there, please. Mr. Regan, if we fail to put relevant information in the findings of fact, that is our fault. That is not the developer's fault. It has no bearing on this hearing. Secondly, your assertion that we were not given this information in that hearing is incorrect. It was present. The board and whosoever person chose not to record it in the findings of fact, but it is in the minutes and it is in the record. It's in the minutes that we had discussion about it? I don't know if it's in the minutes, so we had to. You just said it was in the minutes, Mike. Dan, we're going to set this aside now. We're not going to discuss this further. If you'd like to ask a question relevant to this meeting, go ahead. I have several. All right, go ahead.
I, I can tell you that in Enfield, by the book, we, we went by the rules. If you put in a driveway, little pipe, ditch, that's technically a wetland. You need to go to the ZBA for a special exception to do what's by right. It's in, it's codified in the ordinance to allow people to do this, to access their land and to develop it properly. Even a driveway for a little trailer would need a special exception. Now, I don't know how many seen, you've seen on this board, but that's the law. And we are following the law and it says it's by right. If we meet those criteria, it has nothing to do with previous variances and we did not hide any information. We showed all the information on there. So, sir, I, you know, I, I, I have to caution you on that because you're, you're telling me that I didn't put my plan together correctly and that's incorrect. It had nothing to do with the variance that you were talking about for use.
Excuse me, I'm not suggesting you broke any laws. Carl, I think you do a wonderful job. I've seen you a number of times. You do a completely above board job. What I'm suggesting is that there was not suggested, I never heard that there were wetlands issues until after that variance was passed.
Then you had to look at the plans.
And then we said, oh, now we have to have a special exception meeting. The first time I learned about that was that night. The very last day. We discussed that there would be future meetings. Um, and I do recall that we specifically talked about there would be wetlands issued, issues considered in future meetings, that if there were wetlands variances required, those would be raised at a future meeting. So the topic did come up. You might be able to find that in the minutes. Um, let's come back to this meeting rather than the previous meeting, which is over. Are there any questions in discussion? Or, um, are there any questions from the board about any other questions about this meeting? Anybody have any questions for the?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, oh, yes, please.
I think that this particular developer has done an incredible job of presenting his needs to us so that we have all the information. I feel like I I feel like it comes down in steps. I can't absorb everything all at once. And they're required to do it in steps. And I feel like you have followed the steps and that you have carefully brought in people to explain to us what you plan to do. And, and I, not everybody that comes to the board does that. So I'm feeling like you've given us incredible amounts of information and you've illustrated it well so that we will be able to make a well reasoned decision. Whatever it is.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a question for the board. You want to decide this tonight or do you want to continue this to the next meeting?
I'd do it tonight.
I would too.
Let me read the, the, uh, special exception conditions. And just tell you my thinking briefly. Um, I've got, I've got a small problem. I hope somebody can help me understand. The proposed site is found to be an appropriate location for such use. What is the use that we're, that we're discussing here? This, I think this is a problem with the zoning ordinance is wording in that the conditions for special exceptions are given one time for all special exceptions. But it feels like the special exceptions are different when we're talking about wetlands. And I'm not clear on what's meant by use here. Are we talking about the use as a residential building? The wetland. See, Bob thinks it's the wetlands. I'm confused about what we're talking about here. Because normally when you're talking about a special exception, you're talking about, for example, allowing something from the list of specially accepted uses in the ordinance. I'm, I'm looking at the ordinance here, special exceptions, section four oh three. And it says you can permit the following special exceptions, the following uses, and they name out all these uses, like in the R one, you can have restaurants, daycare centers, professional offices, recreational facilities.
So, so Mike, and those are the uses.
Yeah.
They list in a wetland area, the following uses may be allowed. And they say roads, which is what they've asked.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Was the use.
It's an appropriate use of the land to put in a road.
So you're, you guys were thinking that in section D, they list as bullets one, two, and three, that those are the three uses that we're talking about here.
That was my, that was my understanding of it.
Isn't appropriate to put a road there?
I think that's a reasonable interpretation. Thank you for helping me understand that. Okay, so with that in mind, the proposed ten sites are found to be appropriate locations for roads, driveways, or utility easements. Um, assuming they are essential to the productive use of the land. So are each of those ten sites and the wetland impact, they are essential to the productive use of the land. And if they are constructed to minimize any detrimental impact upon the wetlands. So that would be a full reading of criteria one. The proposed use will not adversely affect property values or improvements in the adjacent areas. We have a general statement um, from McKeon that it won't. We have a question from the. We have a question from the public that's points out McKeon talks about the May Street neighborhood. But doesn't specifically mention, and I think this is why the Alvesta Jones are here, the Route Four area of the surrounding neighborhoods. That would be my guess. So there's a question there that we should discuss.
Fourth modern question.
Well, it's 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 pro- it's the question, it's an adjacent area to the to the property that they're affecting. So they're developing the property and everything around it is considered the adjacent area.
Okay.
We focused on the Maple Street neighborhood, but we haven't really looked over here at the May at the Route Four properties. You know, and the properties up on the mountain around behind it, we haven't heard much of them, except for John Talveste, who are here representing that constitution.
Didn't we didn't we cover that though? When we did the previous hearing, we covered, and all this is.
We can't bring that in.
All this is saying that those ten wetland areas do not affect it, and I haven't seen any relevant information that those would particularly affect the value. The other thing is, don't forget, this is subject to hydrologists and all the rest. This is the step, we, you know, and only look at those ten areas and say, do they cause any significant problems?
Thank you for bringing us back in focus.
Yeah.
That's that's perfect, so. Wait just a second. So the proposed use, which is those ten wetlands impacts for the roads and driveways, would that adversely affect property values in the adjacent area, Main Street and everything? That's the that's the question. Is that what you mean, Bob?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh I'd like to just reiterate what he said is that it sounds as if we can also grant an exception with the provision that they obviously follow all subsequent permitting processes and to the, you know, the standards of federal, state, and local authorities.
Oh, should you amend the motion?
Um let's let's, I've got one condition written down that I'm gonna propose. Why don't you guys make notes of any other conditions that you want to pose or to impose, and then we'll discuss that.
Should we amend the motion to say this the way Mr. debate put it, it depends on all of that.
We might. I'd like to finish what I'm doing here. But yes, that would be the way to do it. We would amend the motion to include the conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's you're right. That's the way we would do it. Okay, uh C, appropriate and adequate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use, which is the filling of the wetlands uh to allow these roads and driveways to be created, so appropriate and adequate facilities for the proper operation. That sounds a lot like the DES and
the hydrologists and those. Those will be the ones that do that best. It's not in here. It's not necessary for this. It's necessary in the next step, but not for this.
So that might be a condition of approval that they.
That's that's fine. You're making a condition of approval of something because it's required by law, so.
And they have to have this before they can do the next step with the hydrologist.
Hydrologists might say it's terrible, you know, you don't know. They don't know. They're hoping it doesn't. But we have to, because we approved the first one unless this specifically uh causes a real problem that we can evaluate, which we can't. And they're asking for something that's reasonable, which I think it is. We we should approve this so they can get to their next step. Because that's where the experts come in. We're not experts with regard to hydrology or anything else.
So that's that's more detailed than I was thinking. What I was thinking about is the points raised by Ms. Mizur, Ms. Buffet, and actually Mr. McKeon in his letter about the um and Dr. Titus, I don't know where he went. About the full drainage management program. Yeah, so what I'm thinking is that.
But they can't do that. They can't come up with that until they can take the next step.
I agree, but we can say your, our approval is conditional upon your creating a full drainage management program in accordance with all regulations and laws and best practices. We can say something like that.
That's what we should do.
And I think that would allow us to satisfy condition C.
Go on.
That would make me comfortable that we're requiring satisfaction of condition C, because it's a pretty specific thing. Somebody's got to maintain those uh dr- that drainage system. Okay, D, the proposed use will comply with the applicable regulations in the district. That means the residential district, the R one district, in which it is lo- to be located. I don't know how to approach that one. Could somebody else talk about that?
So the project does not comply with the applicable regulations.
Tell us more, sir.
Because it's gonna be too high and they have too many houses on one lot. So this rule doesn't say, oh, if you've got a variance, you don't have to worry about this. It says it will comply with the regulations of the district.
I hear what you're reading. I hear your your assertion, but the legal interpretation of that is they have a they have a legally, they have a permission to they have a variant. To operate, yeah, they have a variant.
It doesn't say in here if you have a variance.
It doesn't have to. That's not part of it. We've granted them a s- a special clause. It's it's as though we had written a special wording in their copy of the uh the variance or the uh zoning ordinance. That's what a variance is.
Permission to to.
Some very intelligent people.
So you can't you can't take away the permission you've already given.
But some very intelligent people wrote these, and I think they would have foreseen situations like this.
Yeah, it's not that. We're not we're not talking about whether they were intelligent or not. What we're talking about is what the courts have decided about the variance procedure in land use law in the state of New Hampshire. So when you grant a variance.
Yeah.
You're effectively amending for that particular parcel of land, the zoning ordinance, effectively, not actually, but in essence, that property will comply with all effective regulations, because the regulation has been slightly changed for that property. That is the effect of a variance. I mean, it's not legally, it's the same thing. If you go to, if you go to a lawyer, what they'll say is you have a legal, you have a lawful, nonconforming use. So it's not considered a violation.
Moreover, isn't this special exception about what we're doing now? It's not the whole project.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
It's just the emergency roads, wetlands.
It's not going back and saying, oh, is the whole project?
No, it hasn't been.
It's right. Will the fill, will the fill for the purpose of creating roads comply with the applicable regulations in the district in which it is located?
Doesn't mean the whole project will.
Yeah, I keep I keep losing focus on that.
Yeah. We're talking about this.
That was an interesting digression there, Mr. Regan. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Oh, you're welcome.
It was interesting to think about.
So but that's too wordy.
Well, maybe he should, can he read, may he read it out for us so we can all hear what what we've got and and amend it and then.
We grant the special exception. This is not a motion. This is just words. We grant the special exception with the condition that the applicant will.
Followed through.
Will what?
Followed through.
Say again.
Followed through with the required governmental approvals.
Yes. Yeah, follow through with the required governmental approvals. That's perfect.
Something else.
I mean, they're the best practices for the management of the special.
You can add that on too, because that it's our property. They have to plow, they have to do all the rest of stuff. They all that take care of the property.
And they're gonna have to come back to us again and again, I'm afraid.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Somebody else now.
But they might have to come back to us for other things, so we'll deal with those then.
Yes.
What I'm what I.
Words. That was really good.
I forgot what I said, so.
Mr. Huzik pointed out earlier that there really isn't any need to um make our approval conditional on their following state law. So we don't have to say things like you have to get the appropriate permits. That's already required in the law. What I want to add instead is a is a condition that says and I don't know how to word this, and this is what I'm looking for help. I want um a reasonably concise uh statement of obligation to maintain the facilities that control the runoff from the property.
Well, what's wrong with what you just said? That was good.
Or that they'll maintain all the interventions that they make on the on the land. All the interventions made possible by this particular special except uh by this special exception. So you're saying that whatever they do here, they have to take care of.
See, but it's not only the special exception, because what you're saying is, you're saying you want them to maintain the property according, because there's going to be other things that they're going to be required to do. Once a hydrologist comes in, once, you know, the DES comes in, so they're gonna put requirements. So you could say that they have to maintain any of the requirements placed on them by, you know, governmental bodies or by you know, reviews or
Yeah.
subsequent uh kind of uh controls that are put into place. I, you know, it's it it's a step. The DES.
You don't have to say anything except granting the special exception because the law requires them to do all the stuff that comes next. Uh you you could, you could, you don't have to put a condition on it because of what they have to do.
Exactly. They obey the law because they have to obey the.
You know, we we don't have to put feel-good things in. If you want to, it's fine. You can put them in, but right now they have a ton of steps to go through.
Right.
You know, and I I don't envy them, because the DES is gonna run rampant, the hydrologists are gonna have issues. Probably the whatever.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes?
What is the term of art for systems that let's say this was a different project, any 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 project that might affect the wetlands and might cause more water to leave the property than had in the past. So let's say, so in this case, we're concerned about, like, if if somebody were to pave the entire property. And so now all the water that used to fall on it would run off onto somebody else's property. What would be the term of art for a system you would put in place to prevent that outflow from happening?
It sounds like more of an engineering thing.
You follow me? I'm not talking about this. Don't go here. Just think about your professional, you know, just.
It'd be that uh all the design and construction and management construction and operations, M and O, they call maintenance operations. That that's all actually embedded in that AOT permit. All those right permits are embedded in there, design assistance, everything. Management, uh temporary uh road controls, if you name it, it's all embedded in that.
Yeah, I think mitigation is the word you're looking for. We would mitigate any drainage coming off the site. And that's essentially what Carl would do through the AOT. You'd be mitigating that drainage, and as he'll tell you, the the post has to be less than the pre.
Right.
So they have to have less water running off the site, which doesn't bring anything up, but they have less water draining off the site. After the project is done, prior to what's over there now.
What makes the, what obligates in the state of New Hampshire, what obligates the property owner to prevent a change in the an increase in the drainage off their property under somebody else's property?
In state law, the ES regains. So that's it. And I think if you're looking to condition it.
That's what I'm.
Talking about mitigation is too narrow, right? We're gonna have to do more, as this gentleman said. You could say, if you so choose to approve it, subject to all requirements of all regulatory authorities. And and you can include the planning board if you want, which still be a regulatory authority, right? And that will capture anything we're either dictated to do by state law, not in not increasing the post uh development runoff, uh to do all the requirements of AOT for protection and mitigation uh for all of those different things that may be required, and you capture it all with that condition. I don't think it's necessary, but if it makes everyone feel better that they have it, we're comfortable with that. We agree to that condition. You know, you know, the thing you gotta worry about also is, are you committing by making these requirements, are you committing the town in any way? I don't know if you're committing them to be responsible for this. I'm saying that.
For the enforcement of it.
Yeah, this is state. If if they screw up, the DES is gonna come in, slap their hands, tell them they were bad boys, and they're gonna have to make a change. If there's too much water going down to May Street, it's, you know, it's it's gonna be on them to fix it. We we don't have to get involved in that kind of granular type of situation. All we have to do is approve these ten subject to state law. And if it gives further comfort consistent with that remark, is consistent and concurrent with the DES and the state, the town, their statute and their regulations, has statutory authority to revoke any site plan approval that doesn't comply or doesn't meet the representations of the plan. So if we show it on the plan and in real life, it doesn't comply, you have the power with notice to have a hearing and revoke that. And I say you, the town, and its planning board.
Like two of the four conditions laid down were a hydrology study and a full drainage management program. I think the way Mr. Cronin just gave us an umbrella, I think captures both those things, I don't know.
Do you want to propose an amendment to the motion to have that condition added?
No, thank you.
Alright.
I think I I go back to, all we have to do is approve or disapprove the requested ex- special exception, because laws take care of all the rest of it.
I.
And and.
Slightly different responsibility. I know we're talking about the steps, but I I dare responsibility is different.
Wait, when you look at this, that's just an incredible amount of water running off. And and anything they do is gonna mitigate. Because it's gonna grow more vegetation.
What I'm looking, what I'm thinking about here is beavers. The changes that they're gonna make to the to the wetlands here in these ten areas. We would we would like the town, particularly the people in attendance and to review this record later and live in the area, we'd like them to have some level of comfort that we considered whether or not uh these changes will affect the quantity of runoff from that property. Is it is it gonna make the bad situation on Maple Street worse or not? Um I think what I'm hearing, and I agree with, I think what I'm hearing is that the other regulatory, the regu- the other regulatory authorities will require the developer and the owner of this property to prevent that from happening. It's already written in law that they can't allow that to happen. I'm pleased to have it on record that we have considered it, we have brought that information out and presented it, that we have considered adding conditions um and and discovered that they aren't probably really necessary, because they're already part and parcel of the process, the legal process. I'm not saying that we should not add conditions, just pointing that stuff out.
Let's add the conditions.
Let me ask, let me ask attorney to uh restate his, the condition he suggested.
That was excellent.
Because he's a lawyer.
If I were to make the motion, I would move to approve the requested special exceptions with the condition uh that the developer complied with all regulatory requirements. That's simple.
Excellent, thank you.
Do you have that typed out? Would you read it out to us, please?
Uh would be to grant the special exception.
Uh would be to grant the special exception with the condition that the developer comply with all regulatory requirements.
I call the question.
Well, we need to vote on whether to amend the motion.
Oh, okay.
As su- as suggested by the, will we?
Because I made the motion, I but we accept the amendment.
Okay.
I move that we accept the amendment. There, that's what I want to say.
We'll amend the motion as suggested by Attorney Ottland.
Yeah.
Um as odd as it feels to accept a motion wording from the applicant's lawyer.
But it works.
Does everybody think that's a good wording for this motion?
Yeah.
I think it catches what you're trying to achieve.
Okay.
I think it does, but I think we also need to discuss some other conditions.
Okay, great. So uh do we all in favor of amending the motion as
Presented?
Presented by Whitney, reading from the minutes. Okay, so the motion is so amended. Um we'll continue our discussion. Other condition you wanted to talk about?
Yep, um the emergency entrance will be a stone surface. The developers suggest, yes, that's the case, but it did come up from the conservation committee, um and I think it is something I would like to see us have in this uh potential approval.
As a condition?
Yes.
Anybody else like that idea? So I'm hearing that as a motion to amend the the motion to approve to include the condition that the that the emergency access road remain unpaved, that it be a a previous surface.
Well, I mean, where where do we start with conditions on the plan? Like, I mean, we say, all right, this this, we want this to gravel, and we have to make sure that this is, there's nothing else here. And where where does it end? Like, when, you know?
Is it on gravel here? I mean, maybe we need to specify that we're approving the plan number, whatever it is on this date, so that that we're quite sure that this is the one that gets approved and not a a previous one.
Where, at this point, this plan is not final. I mean, they have, they still have to go through all kinds of stages, and this may be changed to some degree.
There's no specifications on what the road will be. Are we going to get into fi- a five-inch base covered with blah blah, neck covered in blah blah?
There to do it.
So Bill asked a question, and I'd like to answer it. Um I think it's a very good question. Um I think we reached out to the conservation commission to get their point of view on this. I like, uh and they raised this issue, so it's important to them. Um and I I think it's a very legit thing, so I'm not going to go through this entire plan and come up with ten other conditions.
Why can't we say that it reflects the the conditions or the suggestions presented by the conservation commission in their letter of whatever, November seventh or whatever it was.
Make sure you got that.
That's not what we're being asked to do. We're not being asked to rule on whatever's been provided by all these commissions. That that information was for us to look at, but as far as the consideration of going ahead with the project right now for the next step.
Right.
It should be with regard to those ten sites. Are they are are they reasonable? Do we think they're reasonable? Do we think we're setting that? Do we think the developer has given us a a nice plan to show where they are? Is there any reason? I think we have to say, is there any reason why we wouldn't approve those ten individual sites?
That's the other way around. They have to, they have to convince us they.
Yeah, I think they've given up enough information.
Okay, all right, I'm with you.
That we we can vote on whether they've given us.
Well, one of the ten sites is that road.
Exactly.
And it's the largest.
That the hydrologists and D E S and all them are going to come back with. And the people in town are still going to be able to come to the planning and say, planning, you know, this is the kind of road. Is this the kind of road that's going to be in? Or isn't it the undergrowth?
I made my point.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Decide if you want to accept it or not. My opinion is that that is the largest um area of impact in the in the request. It's a matter of concern to a couple of different agencies, and I don't think it hurts us to have that as a condition, and I'd be more comfortable with it. Because nothing compels them to refrain from paving that surface.
Okay. I I make a motion that we amend the uh the special exception to say that the emergency access drive must be made of previous material. Second that.
And that gets us out of the job of saying five inches and what it's going to be. Yeah. We know enough to say previous or imperfect, right?
I think you.
All right, all in favor of that that motion? Aye. All right, so we got a five zero.
No, you don't. I didn't get to oppose it.
Oh, I'm sorry, opposed?
Yes, I've opposed.
You've got to nay like a horse.
Nay.
The rule on my Z B A is if you're going to vote no, you have to nay.
Nay.
All right, so four zero. Four zero.
Four one.
Four one. Four zero in favor of amending the motion. One, four one. Four one. Thank you very much.
After all that.
Right, after all that.
It's your nay street.
Okay, uh any other conditions that we need to discuss?
Yep, my last one is, uh we need to have a second um appraisal done that includes more than just Maple Street. And while I can't require it, I would love to see it be from a local appraiser. Um and because right now we only take.
Okay, it's a motion.
Right now, we only take one third or not even maybe twenty-five percent of the surrounding territories. Surrounding properties.
Can I just make a procedural note? If you read that letter, he's talking about distance, right?
Yeah.
The real focus is six hundred feet.
Right.
In my opinion, that that would apply anything beyond the six hundred feet, wherever it's located. His focus was on Maple because that's what we asked him to focus on. Is that where the folks came before and were concerned? I didn't recall the prior areas, other people saying that it was impacting them. I think the woman that spoke tonight said it didn't impact her, but the water was flowing through. It's going to continue to flow through. So I think that letter covers covers it all.
I think his final paragraph in which he restates his motion, so to speak, does not mention Maple Street. I think we've been focused on it because he did mention it earlier. But I think you're right, attorney. He says, he wrote, based on my thirty-five years of experience, and I am a real good um appraiser, my opinion is that the filling of wetlands that are six hundred feet or more away from the closest neighboring homes, assuming and assuming a full drainage management program will be in place, will not diminish the value of the surrounding residential property.
Okay.
So he does not opine that this, he's not, he's not considering only the properties in May, in Maple Street. But we just heard that what they asked him to do was to give an opinion on the impact on Maple Street, so I wouldn't suspect that he went beyond that.
But the law says six hundred feet.
I'm going to I'm going to go with a little bit more, perhaps a slightly more generous interpretation. I'm going to take him on it, on the face of it. All right, so we have a motion on the table to amend, to add a condition. You get a second appraisal, preferably from a local appraiser. Um specifically to take into account the areas outside of Maple Street that could be affected by this change to the wetlands. Um, do we have a, we have a second for that motion? Or will it die on the table?
No.
Let's move on. All right.
Any other discussion necessary? Mr. Third, the public hearing is not closed, so yes, you may.
What you're voting on tonight is going to either approve the special exception or deny it. Is that for the wetlands just on their property? And not including the town property that will be impacted, those wetlands on the town property that will be impacted? And if that is the case, does the town then have to come to the Z B A to get a wetland special exception, or does that go through the planning board where they have a deal that way?
Would you like, I'll I'll answer that. It it comes up in a couple of different ways. We're, so what we're considering right now are the ten sites that they have listed on the plan.
One of the sites goes into the town property.
Okay. Um so we're considering those ten sites. That's it. We that's what we're going to vote on tonight, whether to allow them to do those spills on that, on on those sites.
Okay.
You asked, you asked, maybe not aware of this, but you asked separately, does the town have to come to us to ask permission to fill a wetland? The answer is no.
So they can.
Never.
An approval to fill wetlands on the town property.
That's an interesting question.
Part of the impact is on the town property. And they say there's an easement, but I believe it's the easement was terminated when the construction of the water tower was built, and I believe it went directly, that it reverted back to a right-of-way. So is tonight going to approve any wetland impact on the town property where the water tower is, which is proposed on there?
Why would town property be different from any other a butter? It's another owner of property, just like.
Not just, it's not that, it's just there's part, if you look at the drawing. Part of the wetlands that is impacted, that they're either filling or disturbing, is on town property. It's not just adjacent to it. It is on the town property.
Okay, I think I have an answer for you that will cover both parts of the question. Um, Celia, can you hold your question? And Ms. Jones, I saw your hand go up.
It might solve the, I don't know.
Let's, let me, let me point out two things. Um one, the town does not ever have to come to us to ask permission to do things. They have immunity. They they can violate their ordinances. They don't ever have to come to us. So the effect is that it doesn't matter what, whether or not they're asking for permission to fill on town property, because the town could just write them a letter and say, it's okay. So basically, what I'm saying is that it it doesn't matter that part of their, part of their their fill area is on town property. It doesn't have any effect on the on the board's decision because the town could, you know, if we say no, you can't do that, the town could turn around and say, yeah, go ahead. That's number one. Number two, the easement and right-of-way stuff, um those are granted to the the uh property owner is allowed to work in those areas. They're allowed to make alterations and improvements, as the legal term, as long as it doesn't affect the use of the easement. So if they're filling a a section of land within the easement, as long as they're not interfering with the purpose of the easement, there's no, there's, there's no effect, there's no prohibition. Does that help you understand it? That answer it? It's it's not an end to stopping the project. Let's put it that way.
The easement, the same as right-of-way. I thought the right-of-way just gave you the access to it, which is a leave what they have.
I think in this situation, it's a distinction without a difference. I think the effect is the same in this situation. Yeah, I I agree, there is a difference, but it's not this. Celia, do you have something you want to say briefly?
Yes. I thought we were just talking about the three wetlands with the roads crossing in the field. We're not talking about six wetlands.
We're talking about ten. There are ten.
When you get to ten.
There are ten areas of impact on the property.
I can say that in the uh.
They're on the plan. They're in the application.
All of these. Where the red lines are. Last time you see the red lines.
Yeah, this is again, not new information. Ms. Jones, did you want to make a comment or ask a question?
Wait a minute, I want to look at that.
What, while you, while you study that, let me ask Ms. Jones to have, make her comment.
Saying that the town had ability to do whatever they wanted to do. No, I don't think they come to the board.
We believe we know that. I think that's what I was trying to explain to this person.
Which is not with it.
Oh, okay.
Your question.
Okay.
Um the engineer wanted to say.
I'd like to have you look at the applications.
Ma'am, I'm not gonna.
Celia, you're not going to?
We know the content of the application. I'm sorry you didn't see it when you reviewed it yourself. We knew, we knew going into this that there were ten sites that they were talking about.
We didn't see any.
Carl, do you have a brief statement you'd like to make?
No, you you already did. People already did it.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Buffet, very briefly.
Very brief. The one thing that's not mentioned, and I think maybe Rob Taylor can clarify this.
More brief. What is it?
All of our wells have, go to the water tower.
Okay.
Anything happens to that water tower through any of this process that brews up water for every single water user in town.
Do you think they've thought about that?
I'm sure they have, but it wasn't discussed fully here.
So you you would like us to be aware, you'd like us to be aware that there is risk to the water tower from in doing construction near it?
Yeah.
I think we took that as writ when we were considering the fact that there, that this is a housing development come all over the place around the water tower. I think we know that. All right, is there something special about filling wetlands around this area that that threatens the water tower?
I'm just making a point at how important that water tower is to the entire town.
Okay. All right, so we're closing the public hearing now. No more comment. We're about ready to take our vote. I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
Okay, actually, we are of speed, obviously, so personally affected by it. But I just want to point out that the amount of water that's flowing down to Maple Street would probably not be affected one way or another. But each individual property owner down there may well be. And I'd be wondering if that may raise any limitations.
That's a good question. Right, so the aggregate outflow off the property might not change, but it might affect one property more or less.
Keep in mind that they're building three large buildings that will affect the water from above, so where the what was wetlands are right now. Property owners in Maple Street may be affected also.
I would expect that if I would expect that if the development had a negative impact on one of the properties, that that property owner would have legal recourse. And I suspect that the developers are aware of that, and they will make sure that they follow those regulations. So it's an interesting question, but I think it's dealt with um under the, under the current law. I closed the public hearing, but he was in line to vote already, and I didn't want to
Yeah.
take away his right to vote. All right, so we're not taking any more comment. I'm referring back to the election when, you know, if you get lied before seven P M., they'll let you vote even if it's after. All right, any other discussion? All right, I'll call the question. Would you read the motion as amended, please? By you, I mean Whitney Banks, our minute taker.
All right, so we have, uh the motion is to grant the special exception with the condition that the developer comply with all regulatory requirements and the condition that the emergency access drive be made of previous material.
Any questions about that from the board? Yes, we do.
Okay.
I know you do. They're on record as four to one against me. I think that's the first time you've ever voted against the anyway. All right, all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Aye. I'm not going to do it.
Another opportunity. All right, four to one in favor of granting the special exception. Uh, thank you, everyone, for participating. I enjoyed this evening's meeting more than most.
There wasn't a single mistake on the minutes.
I've got, I've got a motion recorded.
Approved the amendments of the whatever meeting it was.
October eighth?
October eighth, because there aren't any mistakes that I could find. October eighth, because there aren't any mistakes that I could find.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You may go home now. We are adjourned.
Blood, you can't do.
Good luck in court tomorrow, I think it is. I'd go, but I forgot to reschedule my noon appointment that I have every week.
Your massage?
My miss. I'm very interested in hearing the decision. I'm interested, I'd love to hear the arguments. Um, I understand there'll be a transcript though, so I can, at least I'll be able to read it. And I understand that we're not allowed to dissipate anyway. It'll all be decided in the grand